This year's goals this evening. Has anyone come with any revisions?
Andrew.
Great.
Okay, so I don't know if in the goal number one for the objectives of its model. And I don't know if you need to add these things or I just definitely wanted to. For board of ed recognitions, I'd like to see, I'm not sure. Do you recognize tenure at the beginning of school year?
Last year, we did not. We talked about shifting it to make it a little bit more personalized at the building level across the year.
Yeah, because that hasn't been happening, at least in my years.
It did, yeah.
Because I think that's important to do. And as a board, I think we absolutely have to recognize retirements. We don't do that.
Who's doing qualifications?
Retirements?
Yeah.
Do you recognize who's being retired, who's retiring?
Yeah, I know we did, not this year, but we did last year.
Last year, Erica moved retirements into the newsletters to feature them.
I think we need to bring people who give thirty-five years of their career to our district, to this board meeting and thank them.
I think they're invited by a lot of people.
They don't get invited. When I retired, I got nothing. I didn't even get a letter. I didn't even get a card. And our teachers, friends of mine are upset about it. They don't, they don't get recognized. And I think it's, I think it's right. I think we need to do that. As a board, if you want to do it. And if they don't come, they don't come. But I think we need to invite them here and thank them for what they do for our district.
Yeah, they should get some kind of like letter of recommend, of recognition or a handshake, like a picture, whatever, like a...
Nothing. I got nothing. So then I don't know after me if it changed, but people are, I know before me it didn't happen either because I still talk to colleagues who are still upset about it. So I think it's something we need to do.
Maybe we can build it into like a board meeting towards the end of the year and like lump everybody together at once and bring everyone in on a one date?
Yeah, one, one meeting, one time, yeah.
Do the, the schools don't do anything?
The schools, yeah, the individual schools recognize teachers who've retired.
Yeah, that's what I had, retirement.
But I will tell you that when I retired, I was invited to a board meeting, but I couldn't go because it was conflicted, but like that, and then I did have a retirement day.
Yeah, I mean, there's a, usually something at, at the school level, but I think as a board, we need to be thanking teachers for, for, you know, their dedication to our district.
Up until this year, was that qualification? Because I remember we were going through all the years of how long, we knew Dan was retiring this year and how long she'd been here. So there we appear.
How many retirements did we have this year? Do you, do you know, Lefian? I can't, I can't remember. I just...
I don't remember.
I know.
The other thing that I would like to include on the first objective, showcase professional instruction, programmatic achievement of East Haven Public School faculty and staff, highlight faculty members district newsletter, board of grad recognitions. I don't know if we want to put a parentheses and put retirements, tenure in there or not just so that we know that we do it. And presentations, I don't think we had very many elementary presentations this year. They were mostly middle and high.
I read the whole one.
I think there was some, but not very many. I'd like to see more elementary. I mean, there's great things happening in, happening in our elementary schools. I know we used to do that. I remember every school had some kind of presentation.
Yeah, we did, in the beginning of the year.
We did. This past year?
Yeah.
Every school?
Terrara, DC Moore, I mean, DC Moore, Dear Run, Tuttle.
I, I remember that as part of...
Chris Kane, Paul Kane, Julie. Everybody gave a present, presentation, each one was cool.
Adam, can you clear that up too?
I think maybe what I'm hearing, a distinction is that we have schools integrated. So everybody presented as part of the data review process in the fall. And then we had highlights. So when we were talking about our East Haven literacy model, we featured different components of schools we're doing. Or when we talked about safe school climate, we featured different schools within it. I think what, what I'm hearing you say is like a school having a standalone presentation. Is that correct, Marion?
Yes.
Yeah.
What would you want them to present on?
They may, they decide themselves.
Okay, like just maybe a project they're working on or like a school project?
I think something that they're proud of as a school and they have an opportunity to showcase at a board meeting.
Okay, I can see that. What's that term? I'm, I'm thinking of the word that I want to say. And I can, no, I'm like thinking of it like a word that represents what you're, what you're saying, something that...
Because we want to showcase each school.
Yes. So the schools have an opportunity to showcase, not, not being told, we want you to come and show this.
Yeah.
You get to decide what you would like to showcase from your school.
Like a pride or something like that?
It could be, it could be, it has happening in physical education. It could be anything that school would like to do.
Good question.
I just think it's important.
Adam, can we get that on the calendar, ask the, all the principals?
Yeah.
Take a day throughout the year?
Yeah, we can help arrange it.
If there's anything specific that might coincide with the calendar year.
Do you want me to just go through my whole list?
Yeah.
Okay, so on the second...
Oh wait, no, let's take it with one. Everybody with one first, yeah. And, oh, none, I'll score, nothing else with one?
Those are the two main things, the board of red recognitions and, oh, no, I have one more thing. Specific, specific partnerships. It says it's the integral with states, meaningful partnerships with schools, families, local communities. So do you want to be more specific with that community? I know we have partnerships, you know, with the Velo and it's, I think more like the Chamber, things like that.
Who are the Chamber?
Those kinds of, of partnerships.
We partner with the Chamber.
I know they, they recognize our kids, they recognize our, our teachers.
They also do a career night here, each year in December.
Oh, okay.
They kind of like, I think last year they mixed it with capstone night? Am I off on that?
No, you're right. We integrate capstone with it. And then there's quite a bit in building out the CTE program as well. So some of that started to gain, not just in the night.
And the Rotarys also has partners within the district too, where they highlight, we have kids come to our Rotary meetings and things like that too, for dinners and students of the month and things like that.
I know students of the month, Rotary is really...
District newsletter.
I'm sorry?
The district, it's usually all highlighted when they do it in the district newsletter.
Okay. All right. That's it for the name.
So just under number one, under object, uh, under one adding...
Tenure, retirement in, I would say, school...
School showcase?
School showcase, yeah, showcase, yeah, yeah, yeah. You were saying it when you said it.
I was just showing it.
Did you say it was not...
I'm so excited.
You said showcase, sorry.
I'm teasing you. You were so busy thinking it.
Yeah.
And Lynn, the number is eight, yes, about the time.
Okay, so it's not like twenty-five. It would just be nice to have a meeting and maybe the principal could speak about the person, a little like, not a five-hour thing, but a little blurb about what they've, you know, we have a cake afterwards, you know what I mean? Like, once a year, I just, it would just be a nice recognition, I agree.
There was something that it, there was a whole, in the paper, they came out about this capacity, which she was doing in her retirement. There was a, the district newsletter, and the comment did something about, I know, her. Were any of the other teachers featured?
No.
No?
Doesn't happen.
Just the one, then I, I don't want to say this one.
So that's a big one. Just, I really feel small.
I agree, I think it's...
Okay. Karen, Lynn?
No, I think she kind of covered.
Is there an update on, I know we talked about last year, we were focusing, I think, a lot on parent square. Are we still really honing in on the capabilities of what that offers?
Can we maybe more of a superintendent goal being its operational?
It just said through a variety of techniques and platforms. And then last year, during our objective criteria and outcomes, we talked about parent square.
For one still, right?
Correct. So I just, I wasn't sure if we were still focusing on...
We don't do parent square, but that's for, for school and...
The district uses it as well as schools.
Yeah.
For communication, it's integrated through the district. Tonight, we have Randall Osborne and Chee Kwong Lee coming to show smart sites, which is married with it, around the new website.
I know there's a lot of additional features, I think, that we haven't really started using. So I wasn't sure if we were advancing on that at all this year.
I can speak to another component that we've added on as well later.
Awesome.
Oh, and then here we had, I see for last year, the full, initial implementation of the K-five vision of the East Haven graduate? Are we fully immersed yet or...
Yeah, I would say we are immersed and moving on to the next level. So I was just gonna, you might want to consider the, the initial component off of there.
That's what I'm, okay. And then with that full implementation of parent square, is that complete or are we, I just want to see for revision, just clean it up?
Well, she just, that's what she just...
No, I know, but I don't know if it's fully done.
I would say that it is, it's fully implemented. It continues to be refined in response to feedback from families.
So continue?
I, I think that there's a lot of work ahead in that area.
Refine parent square, you got that? Instead of cross out full implementation of new, just put refine parent square?
Do I have it actually printed because I was just writing simple notes?
Two new components this year are the website being built out and then a component called smart documents.
Okay.
But one of the biggest refinements is making sure that the information at the classroom level doesn't get lost. Like, we want to think about that percentage of engagement and so condensing some of the other messages is really important.
Okay.
Shell, I don't have that, can you write that one?
I'll, I'll write it down then, yeah.
Because I don't have the individuals. I was reading it off my phone.
It's gonna be magic if anyone could read my hand right.
Yeah. We just got here.
All right. Okay. Anything else on goal one?
Do we want to mention anything about our website, which I think has been updated, right? Is it...
Looks great, actually.
Yeah, it looks really good. We're gonna have a little, we're user-friendly, presentation on that tonight, I believe.
I, I do have some feedback just while we're, I couldn't find an email address on it. You can message a teacher, but the email addresses weren't.
Would that go under...
Yeah, 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 just before I forget.
Because it is for a reason.
Okay, okay. But I don't know if we want to include, you know, the, I, I don't know, anything about refining and communicating through, we're using it. We want to mention the website and continually development.
So I, then it would just be refine parent square or refine the, well, it's completely, been completely redone.
Right.
So we don't really need to do redesign it, right?
Just kind of, you know, continually update, right? Like, you know.
Again, I'm missing the word. You know what I'm saying, right?
I do, I just don't know what it is.
First regularly done. Maintenance, is that it? Am I thinking of that?
Yeah.
Maintenance?
There's still a lot, there's still a lot for us to add out on the website.
Okay.
Maintain and refine.
So I think the build is done with the...
Maintenance or maintenance? I don't know, I can't think of the frigging words completely.
There are metrics that we can study in terms of evidence of impact, in terms of outreach. Like, there might be something there about establishing a baseline in terms of what was interaction and engagement like prior, even just through parent square, getting a baseline with the website contacts and then being able to build out from theirs. Might be something to consider. Because that's a whole goal of those platforms, is the two-way engagement.
Is it too early to do that?
Um, I can take a look during our break.
Continual maintenance and improvement of website. Or just put, not even put continuous, because I sound like an ass. Update may be fine. Well. Like, they don't know. All right. Anything else for one? Okay. Two. Operation fiscal responsibility.
I don't have anything new for two, but a comment about the first objective. We did not do that and I think we really need to start doing that. We need to start looking at our facilities. It's not something that's gonna happen overnight. So I think rather than all of a sudden being, you know, budget function and in two months we have to make it happen, it'd be nice to do it leisurely and really kind of look at what we have and what are possibilities.
To improve the utilization of our, of our, our buildings. I mean, it's written right there. I don't think we have to change it. I think we just need to do it.
I think we have like, don't we have a rolling, like, worklist of things that we want and things we want to do and like things we pull off? Of like projects and things like that? Because I know at one point we had like an athletic schedule where we were doing like certain year grids with rotations of uniforms and things like that. And then, you know, it gets halted when there's, like, right now, they haven't had uniforms in X amount of years, even though there was a schedule.
I'm talking more about school-grade configurations and utilization of our current buildings.
Yeah, like our, yeah.
Yeah, that's being done.
That is, they're always pulling off.
It's, takes a long time, you know?
That's why I think we need to start it. We need to start working on it. We need to have some workshops.
Oh, they've been, they've been working, just nothing to bring yet.
Yeah.
Not yet.
All right.
I think it brings to mind what we were talking about, I think earlier in the year, about special, you know, like maybe, not the reading coach, but the, you were talking about people who share buildings and making sure that they're, that's equitable. And I, and we did not do, I agree, we did not do a good job at that and, and really taking the time and making a plan that all students have the same resources, regardless of who's...
Have you noticed any specific, Adam, like as you've been looking through everything, discrepancies in resources amongst the schools?
I think what I'm hearing is the opportunity to set some like pre-planned communicated opportunities to engage in that study in a really kind of transparent way. You know, I think it brings to question of the equal versus what's equitable. But I think that those conversations only make sense when it's done in a space where there is, leisurely, right? Where it's not under a time crunch.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Do you think that our specialists are being equitably distributed throughout the district?
When we are saying specialist...
Coaches, interventionists? Just for example?
Yes, I think that we are studying some different models to see what really works in East Haven so that we can learn and be able to replicate that. So some areas where maybe we've had more, some stagnant growth to be able to have more access, places where there are maybe more early career educators to be able to have more days and contact time to be able to focus on nurturing their growth. And then what we've committed to is an initial plan. Let's take literacy specials, for example. And then to review that allocation in response to our data meetings that happen every like five to six weeks so that we're reconfiguring based off what our student learning data is showing. That's not something that we've done in the past, but that we've launched into this year with an intentionality to do.
That's fantastic. That, that would be awesome.
And kudos to our team and like embracing that and building the relationships to make it work. Because our, our teachers, our teacher leaders, staff, they're working together to make it happen.
Making the most of what we have.
So do you want the wording different under, where it says like the facility position? So what I'm saying, to make it more specific so that it's something you're seeing or it's something that it could actually be...
I think the specifics are gonna be more from Adam's presentation.
Right, okay, but that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so I would leave it.
Yeah, I think it could stay.
Yeah.
Would like enrollment studies fall into that as well? Some of like that forecasting?
Yeah, and we just did...
I know the district is engaged in them.
Just so you have it, Adam, we did just do a population study not too long ago on some of the schools.
Just last, two years ago?
Was it two years?
Two years.
Yeah.
Time flies.
Wow. It's been two years?
Maybe as a component of that, thinking about re-engaging in that process.
Yeah.
What was the projection, like, was it over the next ten years or?
Nothing, right?
Twenty years.
Twenty years, okay.
But I think it's always good to revisit because what actually happens may not be indicative of what the projections...
Right. Did it have like a year by year? I'd just be curious to see like, just because it's been two years, like how...
Yeah, it was like a forty-page report. It, it took all the state data, it took all the PSIS data. The person we used was very knowledgeable in schools. He was a retired school chief teacher, so he had a background of taking that information, knowing what it meant. But it was a twenty-year projection with each year having an indicator. From what I remember, there was no bubble year for us over the next twenty years. It was up or down, a small amount, but no one giant flux.
I'm gonna have to look back and see where it is.
But again, as things happen...
I think it should be on our drive. Is that on the drive? Is the report on the drive?
I don't know, but you can give it to Sarah to put it on the drive.
Yeah, yeah, just a refresh for everyone.
You know, as things happen in town, it has a large effect on what that projection may be based on current construction or housing projects or potential elderly housing projects. Like, when those happen, it has a large downward impact on our projections. It's a big debate on when we spoke to him because some take the stance of elderly housing only attracts a sixty-five plus, but I'll fight every day that our people will sell their houses to go to that house, to go to the elderly housing and families buy those houses. So I think it fluctuates year to year based on current projects that are happening in town. So it'd be probably good to revisit that to see what was included in that projection for housing projects and developments compared to what's actually happening now.
Have there been any new developments in the past few years?
Nothing has begun, but I believe has been approved. So I don't, you know, I think having the capacity to build and actually building has not changed.
Right, I think that's, yes.
But voted through, where they can start tomorrow has, has changed, yeah.
Okay. All right, maybe, we'll just look at the study that we have now.
And we can revisit from that as we see fit going forward.
And we can look at a comparison of what was projected versus what actually happened in the district over the past couple of years.
See how accurate it is right there, yeah.
You guys should get that then by tomorrow, so you could take a look. All right, so should we just go to three? Yeah. Academics, growth in student learning and achievement in college and career readiness. We have some info on that tonight, I believe. Adam, how does this look to you still with how you're gonna be doing things? Where it's analyzed, the quarterly benchmarks, is there anything different you can give us a little preview to that we might want to start thinking about?
I would say that we've shifted a little bit away from quarterly to think about how we can make more real-time adjustments in terms of programming and support. So that might be the only thing.
So quarterly, huh?
Real-time?
Sometimes you miss the mark by waiting, even quarterly, right? And, and one thing that is, we brought on last year is a platform for monitoring interventions and being able to populate that and bring all the data together. So I think that maybe is a component we want to tie into that as well.
Maybe under integrate evolving technologies to support high-quality teaching?
Yeah.
Just tell me what you want to add.
I didn't hear you.
Um, we're under the third, under the third bullet where it says integrate evolving technologies to support high-quality teaching and learning.
Well, I think that stands.
Well, that's what, that's what I mean. I think that's, it would fall directly into that category and could be highlighted under that.
Should we put something about AI in there? You, are we, where are we, where are we with that?
Yeah. AI.
There's a study group within district that started last year. There, you know, one of our big pushes was to encourage dabbling and it's a through line in terms of, in terms of supporting staff to have a comfort level because that is a component of them being able to move to next levels of integration of just like...
You got to go under four as well.
Removing that fear. And then there's the component with student usage as well. So I think an element of working through that in the coming year and beyond makes a lot of sense.
Okay. So maybe add, we could always, again...
Just keep it under technologies. Instead of giving it its own specific...
Yeah.
Highlight of information, maybe just keep it under technologies.
I think so.
It's touched on, it's...
And maybe just add in the last one while I'm thinking of it, develop comprehensive professional growth and development pathway, professional growth, development pathways and technology for EHPS faculty and staff. Add technology. Even if you want to just do it after professional growth and development pathways or just do comprehensive technology as well as professional growth and development, just put tech in there somewhere.
Which bullet are you at?
Oh.
It's number four.
Four, sorry, I said the four to four because while I was thinking of it. Develop comprehensive professional growth and development pathways, providing updated technology. I don't know, something about tech, right? If you guys wanted to highlight AI. I mean, I don't know if you want to just write AI.
And...
Again, that's just a thought, I want to see where everybody else is.
I feel like we have to write it.
What?
I feel like we have to put it in there.
Put it like, I'm just wondering like how to work it.
It's forever changing and just...
Yeah.
Forever changing, it's hard to do forever.
I should have written down because Adam kind of said it.
Yeah.
Are we still on number three or did we finish or we're just jumping around?
Yeah, we kind of jumped, I don't think we finished.
No, I was just trying to think about the AI.
Moving AI to four.
Should we go back to three?
Yeah, go back to three, sorry, I was just thinking out loud.
One of the components that's come up in regards to artificial intelligence is thinking about the durability of the district's curriculum. Are we teaching to information that students can just find versus are we building the skills that allow them to engage in more complex problem solving to really, I mean, when you think about it, it's the attributes of the vision of the graduate that we need to be able to teach into because those are the components that a computer can't do for us. So there might be some framing there in terms of reviewing, but then pushing it towards those, those attributes.
Well, I see it there with the integrate evolving tech, but if you want anything more...
That's where I see it.
Fine-tuned, I would say now would be the time to recommend those, that wording, because I'm at a loss.
May I take a moment to workshop and you head on to four and then see if there's phrasing that you like?
Yeah, because it already says integrating evolving tech, so I don't know if that covers it or if you, if anyone wants to be...
I mean, evolving tech is evolving, I mean...
That is it. That is AI.
That is.
I mean, it's evolving for whatever it is at that moment. Who knows from now until when we assess this if something's gonna change? So if we put something specific to AI, it could be something else where it's antiquated by then.
That's why I said to maybe add something similar in for four, but I thought that we already had that for three.
Yeah, I think it's a little redundant. And once it gets too specific, then it gets a little bit more, you know, narrower.
Yeah, exactly.
Should, should we include something about, I mean, evolving, you know, I don't know how to really say this. I, I, I don't, you know, we have the program, like, we do have some newer programs, but like the CNA program, like, should we include like continually develop or, you know, be open to adding new programs, like more career-minded programs? Like, more career-minded programs specifically?
I think they, they do that and they could write it in the goals.
I, I do think they, they do it and I, I just don't know if we should include the wording is all.
Well, maybe that would go under even just the first one for programs, achievements, learning indicators and growth to ensure students are prepared for college, career.
It is kind of there.
Career pathways and life. So I mean, that maybe if you want to put pathways under like-
I like that.
Career pathways.
I like that pathways word.
Because then, you know, you can kind of highlight specifics. You can highlight the different programs that we offer and then-
Just by adding that one word, that changes it a little bit.
Yeah, all right, add pathways after career, that's nice, okay. Yeah, because we have a lot now. They added even all the, the dual enrollment classes that you could take under like pre-nursing with the HOSA program, which is pretty good. You get college credit and, you know, high school credit. I like that they even do the Spanish for medicine. Is that what it's called yet?
Medical Spanish or something like that?
Did you have to take that?
No, so you, usually you're doing a translation sometimes. You have to be certified in like medical Spanish terminology because they're different words meaning-
A lot of my nursing students take it.
Yeah, well, it's good to me.
But I think we have it here as dual enrollment. I believe it's one of them. There's a lot of cool options to take. And I know, nevermind, I don't want to say it until he's ready.
All right, number four.
How about, I got a question on number three. Bullet point four, how are we fostering meaningful connections for the whole of the community? I, I, I mean, we wouldn't even put an ad in the Hall of Fame book. We were talking about fostering-
You're right, Jack. I say we have to nix it.
Unless they're coming back and checking in and telling us what they're doing, how are we, how are we checking in?
You have, you have this Hall of Fame committee and I, I'm not talking about just passing it. You have distinguished graduates, you know, I mean, they're here, they're here to accept their award, they're in town.
Who's the committee?
You know, inviting them in and having a family-
Who's the committee?
Who's on the committee? Ricky, Marachi?
Well, then that has nothing to do with the board. We're not on the committee.
Not in choosing them, in, in, again, in recognizing them.
Right, right, I mean, you know.
Inviting them in like-
Well, they go to the dinner.
A graduate who is, I don't know, wanted to become a surgeon, famous surgeon, comes back and talks to some of the students in the CNA program or what, whatever.
I don't know who would do that other than the alumni association and I don't know who that is.
There should be, I agree, like, maybe there could be a-
Board representation?
Maybe that shouldn't be there then, because we really don't do that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, if we don't do it-
We're not assessing their post-secondary success. It's not something that we do.
No, it's not.
Okay, so does anyone agree to take it out, that fourth bullet point in number three?
I think, I think though-
It's not even within our purview, really.
No, I don't know how we would do it.
We've got to take care of what we have here at the moment. I'm not saying to not have that, but-
We do do it on a, not maybe post-secondary, but I think we do it as a district between schools. Like, we do foster connections with like the middle school students-
We won't even congratulate them in an ad, so.
Well, I mean, the middle-
Well, they wouldn't fall under post-secondary success. It would fall under where they have, you know, the kids going back and, you know,
Right.
Going to the elementary level, the middle school level, things like that.
Yeah, that wouldn't be there.
But I don't think that would fall under this, that would change the entire meaning of that.
We don't do it at all. I think we should just eliminate it.
I think they're two different things, but I do think you do a good job of-
And I don't know how we would.
We don't need to do it. That's what I'm saying. We don't have to and we don't, so why is it there?
I'm fine with taking it out. Everyone else okay with that?
Yes, absolutely. Sometimes less is more.
Yes.
To contradict that statement, I have a phrase, if you'd like it, back to the AI conversation.
Back to AI?
Well, I think from what I'm hearing from the conversation, you may want it to live in the second bullet point around clearly articulating, publish and implement a pre-K to 12 curriculum that's vertically aligned, rigorous and relevant. Because it's not about like AI alone, it's about what we, what it allows us to set our students up to do and how we educate them differently in response to it. So maybe adding on a clause to that second bullet, fostering authentic development and application of the vision of the graduate attributes.
Nice.
That's good.
Our curriculum should be in service of developing those.
Yep.
Okay.
Can, can you repeat that for me, please?
Yeah, so at a comma after relevant.
Yep.
And then fostering authentic development
Yep.
and application
Yep.
of vision of the graduate attributes.
Perfect.
I'm going to leave all that rough draft for Sarah.
Good luck, Sarah.
It's quiet in here.
We're thinking, we're thinking. Brain power.
It's quiet in here. Wake up, people!
Are we on to four?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so four, what do we got?
I, I'd like to add an objective, even though I know Adam already is doing it, but I don't see it written here. Provide leadership opportunities for teachers. Even though I know the district is doing it, but we don't have it here, but I want to make sure-
It just says growth and development, yeah.
Including, maybe you could say leadership.
Number four.
Growth and development path.
Oh, that's under objective, objective criteria, sorry. I'm looking at, maybe move that up.
I'd like to actually state leadership opportunities, because the development pathways is not necessarily a leadership opportunity. It could be, but, I mean, Adam's doing a really good job with that. I'd like to see it continue.
How about under the second bullet point where it says aligning professional development to meet the needs of all staff, fulfilling their responsibility, fostering continuous improvement and leadership opportunities?
Yes, perfect, yeah.
Or including.
Including.
Including leadership opportunities.
Yep, sounds good.
Quick question. How do, how do teachers voice their grievances? Is it just through a union representation?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, they should be.
Direct line?
Unless it's HR, then it's confidential.
But, but how about, I'm sure there's places and needy places and I don't know under what category that would, you know, they're not, everything's not grievances, you're kind of-
Like, what kind of complaint?
Yeah.
All right, I'm just getting examples. So, and RJ gave me some insight into that. The mirror award that I was approached by a couple of educators complaining about the fact that they have to leave the school because of janitorial contracts.
Oh, yeah.
So here, here's teachers who want to continue to do work, you know, to get ready for the following day or the following week and yet they're not able to. And then we're saying we want to attract and retain educators. You know, so I'm just wondering how they, how they would get that point, how do, how do teachers get that point across as to a complaint?
I think they talk to the building principals.
That's been happening for years. It's been happening for years and years and years. It's not, it's not just recent. It's a long time.
You know, I'm more of a, I'm sure it's the first time I ever heard of that. I mean, I didn't know about that.
It probably goes back 15, 20 years that we had to leave the building at a certain time. When the custodian's done, they, it's, it's part of the custodian contract, that's why.
Correct, yeah.
Which we, we are currently working on, which I don't know if that could be anything that we could-
Right, but it's going to equate to, it's going to equate to overtime, just so you know.
Yeah.
Like, it's already, there's already that, that time buffer, correct, before and after?
I think it's an extra half hour.
Yeah, there's a time buffer before and after, so it's going to equate to money.
Which is why, which is why the teachers don't stay.
But it's going to be overtime on our, in our custodial area.
I just know in New Haven, I never had to leave my class.
Which I'm sure they're fine with, but I'm just throwing out there.
I've had to retire, but if like a principal's there, I can stay there.
You see, that's why I think in the contract, it should be, if the principal's in the building, the teacher can stay. But it's not written in the custodian contract like that.
I think that'll be a very hard thing for them to give up.
Oh, they wouldn't, they're not going to give that up.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Because that's overtime. That's their overtime. That's, that's why, that's why it is.
Because they close the buildings, they open the buildings. That's in their contract.
But if the principal wants to be there and at work, can they?
The principal can stay as long as he or she wants and can come in anytime he or she wants, but no other faculty members can stay. If, when the custodian leaves, the teachers have to leave.
I will ask, Jack, but I, I- Wouldn't hold your breath on it, but I'll ask next week. But I, I agree, it's weird.
No.
You have teachers that want to stay and plan and prep and get things ready and they're not allowed to.
Right, I mean, I understand that.
I don't know.
I'm just, I just came from work.
Yeah, but again, it comes down to budget.
And we're here, so just can't-
Can't afford it. It's not even about paying the teachers, it's the custodian.
No, I know, but that's whatever, however, you work on their contract, you're on their, you're on the personnel, you see these factors that's in there.
Yeah.
So there's really not much we could do about it.
Well, no, we're just negotiating their contract right now. That's the only, this would be the time.
Should we get back to this and finish up?
I think we get back to this if it pops up when I bring you the contract in a couple of weeks. How's that?
We can have a discussion about it before then, but, I mean, this is what we're-
All right, thank you.
Good point. So that can't fit in number four. I mean, can we, are we on?
No, you were good.
It is 701, just.
Yep. If anyone wants to add anything else?
Should we, the objective, just take out like new certified staff evaluation because it newly developed? I mean, it's not going to be newly developed anymore, right? It's the second year of the plan?
That's like a weird even type sentence, to be honest. I don't, it seems like there's a phrase missing at the beginning and I'm not sure what it is.
Or maybe just provide high-quality feedback utilizing the professional growth and development plan, whatever, and-
Yeah, that's already, that's already there, so you don't even really need the next line. And continue monitoring of teacher tenure status. Maybe utilize staff evaluation plan and continue to, continuous monitoring of teacher tenure status.
You're in, you're in, you're in under one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Again, just thinking out loud.
Put the same to number four, because it says develop comprehensive professional growth and development pathways. That's been developed, but it's constantly evolving.
Continuous.
Can, yeah.
Continue offering comprehensive professional growth and development pathways.
Continue to even develop.
Yeah, continuously.
Which makes it sound like they're not already employees.
Or continue to develop. I mean, comprehensive professional growth and development pathways.
Yes.
Sounds good to me. Continue to develop.
Perfect.
Right on the beginning of number four, continue to develop, instead of just start with develop.
Or continually.
Continue to develop comprehensive professional growth.
Continually develop.
I would take out development path, development pathways. I feel like we're- Continue to develop comprehensive professional growth and development pathways.
They call them pathways. That's what they call them now.
Maybe you, I think you're possibly replacing growth and development with learning.
Okay.
Is what you're looking for there?
Professional learning.
Possibly.
So take growth and development out and just put learning. Comprehensive professional learning pathway is the word.
Yeah, that's better.
Okay. All right, I'm good. Shall we take two minutes?
Sure.
Yeah, two minutes is good. Yeah, two minutes is good.
...for our students to be recognized by their peers across the state and to engage in the kid governor election. So really excited about that because it's finding those connections and doing it in a really authentic way.
We're talking about student recognition, so who could be the contact person? Last year we put out something for, this is through the military organizations, Boy State and Girl State, we got no applicants. And I have to confess, we brought it in a little bit late.
Okay.
All right, but who would that be, like who's the contact? Who do I need to get that information so we can get students recognized?
Yeah, can I get back to you on that?
Yep.
High school level, right?
Mm-hmm.
Boy State, they're both high school?
Yes.
Both Boy State and Girl State.
So featured here, we have pulled up is our new website. What I'm actually going to encourage, if you have a smartphone with you, if you would open it up, because one of the big goals in moving to Smart Site is to think about better integration because so many of our families engage through devices. The domain is easthaven schools dot org, which is also a new domain for our emails. So you can get rid of your dashes and your dots. So easthaven schools dot org.
Wow.
They all still work, so are, do you, come on up guys, do you want to come up to, be up here?
You said they all still work.
No, I don't know if they're on. I think one. Oh, yeah.
So last year we launched Parent Square and one of its untapped potential at the time is the integration with Smart Sites, which is also built in to the two-way communication platform. So, you know, Parent Square allows for messaging from districts, schools, classrooms, but it also enhances the opportunity for families to reach out as well. So it's really about that two-way communication. We have worked across full year, a little bit better at this point, to be able to launch for the start of this school year. We kind of called this our soft launch of making sure that information was there, figuring out what families utilize most and needed to see more prominently on our site. And then we'll go through continued refining stages across the year. Just kind of scrolling down, I want to highlight some things on the landing page. So some of our most visited resources for families are on icons, and then these have consistency across our schools' sites as well. The integration with Parent Square, you can see that there's the opportunity to highlight which posts come into a feed, so you can see like the four most recent at any time. And then also component is integrating our calendars so that school calendars show on school websites. District calendar is showing on the district website. We can click into athletics a little bit. And then also just to be able to highlight some of the things that make East Haven unique. Randor or Jake, would you like to say anything about some of the structure and some of the decisions that went into as we click through maybe a couple of the different landing pages? Can we stay on the district site a little bit longer, Lisa?
Sure.
I think we have built a structure with the idea of trying to keep content current and make it easy for a lot of people to collaborate with content. By integrating this very closely with Parent Square, it allows newsletters, it allows publications, it allows content that our building professionals are creating to go automatically to the website, populate the website. So it keeps it fresh without spending a huge amount of time building that. The calendars are all driven by other calendars. It leverages a lot of technology that's already in place and I hope that it will remain fresh and dynamic for a long, long time.
And we asked about analytics earlier. Marian, you wanted to know a little bit, it was our baseline. So at this point, we just launched and we're at 26,840 hits on our homepage.
That's awesome. Wow, that's great. Impressive.
Jake, are there any of the pages in the departments that you would like us to click into feature? I know you spent a lot of time with the athletics in partnership with Anthony Bruderam. Do you want to look at that one first?
That's good.
So again, thinking about what our families, our community members are looking for to be able to make sure that that is easily retrieved.
And thinking about this as a district site, when we met, we talked about ways to include information here about youth sports in town as theater programs to the high school athletics department so that if you have a student in elementary school looking for information on Little League or youth basketball, those links will live here as well. And then the information on streaming sites for high school games and the link to GoFan to purchase your tickets, some of those things that are just difficult to find if you're not used to navigating those pages on a regular basis.
Lisa, the concept of pathways came up earlier as well in terms of college and career pathways. Would you mind clicking into the Office of Curriculum Instruction to highlight that So each department has a landing page and then kind of the relevant material within.
Now, we're still building out what's behind some of these, like we have.
Yeah, if you go into programs.
So we put information on some of our CTE and college credit courses, dual enrollment courses, and the different areas that they're in. So whether we have communities courses, CTE-related dual credit courses, and STEM courses. And then just some of the additional information for CTE pathways.
So Lisa, is there info about the manufacturing program and POSSA under those, or are they still built, is that still building?
We're still building. This is just kind of a list of what the pathways are. We have some teachers this year as part of their professional learning pathways that are building out like individualized programs of study for each of the pathways, courses that are recommended that they take based on what the co-secondary goal might be.
Nice.
So, you know, I see that these will eventually become links to more information, but right now we just want to provide information to families about what we offer rather than having them have to sort through the program of studies to find which courses are related to dual credit opportunities.
And so some of the accessibility, so you could see the way it adapts on, through the mobile device, so it's built to be responsive, but can you go up and change the language in the top right-hand corner? So by clicking there, you can change it to anything and it auto-translates the entire website content.
Nice.
Let's be sure we can get that.
One of the expanded features as well that was asked about with Parent Square is they're constantly like evolving their platform and as users we are able to access, so there's smart alerts. So if there is like time-sensitive information that we want to get out to the community, that can be a banner that travels on all the pages. So information can come out that way. And then, do you want to shift over kind of under your.
The staff side?
Yeah.
One thing, could we go to departments and finance and operations and solar project?
Oh, yeah, thanks for highlighting that.
And we have a narrative that's actually the roof above us, but if we continue down a little bit, we are or will soon be looking at real-time data from Tuttle Elementary School. It is connecting at the moment, it'll be interesting to see how dark it is if we're producing any power, but we should see that in a couple of minutes as well as some information about how much power has been produced during the day. And we'll continue to expand this as we grow the solar plant setting to the roofs. Make sure we try this a little bit.
Randall, is this something that the public can see or just, oh, really?
Yeah, it's kind of extraordinary how much power has been produced on Tuttle's roof since it got turned on in June. It's remarkable.
While that populates, sometimes there's a lag with the main displays. A question was surfaced earlier around email addresses, and I didn't know if anyone wanted to speak to kind of best practices around not having email addresses on websites. Would anyone, do you want to field that?
Sure. And it is best practice not to have an email address readable as clear text on a website because it's very easy for bots to simply cull all those email addresses and use them as a vehicle to distribute spam email.
Oh, you're going to roll my Apple gift card scam there.
I get one from Michelle all the time.
So there is now a much more secure mechanism for contacting staff members. You click on the staff member, you say leave a message, you're presented with a form, the form automatically sends an email message to that staff member saying it's coming from the website. So it's a much more secure mechanism for interacting with folks via email and interacting with the board via email. The same is true, and I would hope it would reduce the amount of inappropriate email that each of you receive through your email address.
I have a suggestion, only because as a parent, I was trying to send a note to the nurse and like documentation, and I couldn't find her email address to type it in, and there's the little, I could send her a note, I don't, like a little, I didn't want to do that, I wanted to actually attach something. So I don't know if there's a way, you know, to submit forms or.
Gotcha.
You know, that was just my experience.
I don't know if you can send an attachment now, I will look into that, that's a great idea.
I mean, we have to send, you know, all the forms for the.
I think those could be uploaded through Power School though, right? Could that?
They can, but I think that's an interesting feature because there might be something else, you know, that shows up.
But yes, in general, I think your physical stuff was right in the Power School.
Well, this was an injury, but so I can, I don't know if that could be done, but.
We can look into it though, I think that that's a really helpful feedback.
Or even if they were kind of working together somehow, that would.
Was that through the website or through the direct messaging feature on Parent Square?
I didn't, I just was trying to email it. So I ended up going in Power School looking up, I had to send it to my daughter's older teacher, so I ended up looking up their email addresses in Power School, and then one of the teachers offered to send it to the nurse for me because I didn't have her email, which Mark had already sent it, I guess, so it all turns out. But I mean, just.
It's really helpful note, so thank you.
And the sports and athletics, are the, do we have like the rosters available anywhere or is there a link to the, I think, what was it, on the CIAC website? Is there a link to that? And is there also like the schedules for the games? Because I was personally looking.
So I went back to the athletics page on here, so this athletics calendar is syncing with the CIAC calendar so that any of the games that are posted there will be showing, will show up on the athletics calendar.
Okay.
I didn't see the athletics calendar on the look, I guess.
And then Lisa, maybe just, just as a final point, would you click in, so there's a component of this too that's like a secure staff login, and so that's an opportunity for any like kind of secure documents that may not be just in the general like website. And last year we talked about the professional learning pathways and building that out, but then thinking about how we make that learning accessible to all educators within the district. And so if you want to.
So one of the things that came up last year was people looking to return to resources or people that had signed up to participate in one pathway also wanting to see the materials that were posted for, that were used in other pathways. These literally went up today, so we haven't shared yet with the staff that this is even available. But we did start to post the materials for each pathway so that people over the course of the year will be able to see and return to the materials. So if there's a school that's going to do some training on Panorama Student Success but they didn't have someone participating in that pathway, the training that we engaged in with our staff, but also that we used the professional services of the Panorama Support Team to build this out for us, and now it can live and be used year after year. So if someone is absent but really needs that information or missed, you know, missed a note when they were participating and you need to return to it, this information will live here on the staff side of the website. And we're going to go back and start to look at archived materials, maybe from pathways last year that we want to kind of keep available and maybe not feature quite as prominently. The resources for the Professional Growth Plan, our PDUCK team is going to be providing an overview to all schools in the next week or two. The goal-setting process and providing sample resources and reviewing the plan and some of the changes, and all of those materials can live here as well so that if people need to go back and reference them, they have them in an easy location.
So a tremendous amount of work over the past year continues to grow and evolve, but I really want to thank the team for their efforts in it. And then Jake, just for your efforts as kind of like lead website designer behind the scenes, it's really impressive and we're appreciative.
Especially since every time he showed up for a meeting with us, we're like, well, maybe that should be a button and not a tab, and maybe there should be a different layout for that page. For about a year, we tried to, really tried to refine this to make it look the way we all felt it should look, and Jake was a real trooper and came through every time with the design we were really looking for, so thank you.
Is it easy to find the spot to change the language? Like should that be a button, like prominent?
Yeah, it's built.
On the vocal thing, it's right here.
Yes.
Right on the front. It's right at the top, literally like a yellow button at the top of the screen.
Appears on each screen, so it's not just on the whole page.
And it's a universal identifiable symbol with like other platforms for translation. And that can't, we can't change the size on that, that is built in to the platform itself.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Were you presenting on anything else?
Not tonight, though.
Is it tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. RJ?
Lisa, go ahead, no? You sure? All right. So for mine, we'll go through what we were going to go through through subcommittee, it's just our standard reports, invoices, POs. You're still seeing a large abundance at the beginning of your activity, your large POs, over 7,000 are predominantly for the beginning of your setups, our lease payments, our tuition payments that we are aware of currently, and are setting up our open POs for legal and special education services. But if there are any questions, I can go through that now with you. Do you have any? Jack?
John.
No? Beyond that, we have a health insurance report. First off, overall, I'll say the first meeting in October is my goal to get you to our final resting place for the fiscal year as we close out the 24-25 year. We will have an analysis for you of all pieces and where we landed and do a final transfer that first meeting. We are going through everything with our auditors now, so I should have everything for that first meeting in October. But currently now, I want to just give you an update, this is where some minor adjustments. As the fiscal year starts, we still get some, our medical comes in every Monday to pay weekly, but as the year progresses, we still get some lingering recharges that come in that relate back to last fiscal year, which is why it takes a little while to close the year out. But this is where we stand now, our current expense for medical for last fiscal year was the $9.6 million, what we paid Anthem as of current date. Projecting now to be around $2.1 million over budget in medical. So that's where we are now. I don't see this medical number changing, current year is trending better than it was. You can see like July and August last year were 800, close to 900,000, and August was upwards of 1.2 million. We are seeing the trends being around the $600,000 mark for July and August of this year, which is a lot better start to the fiscal year. Hopefully that trends well, and if it continues that way, we should be on solid footing with where we stand now with the current year budget. So again, we'll go through more detail in August, I'm sorry, in October, but hopeful where we are now with current changes that were made, but we'll go over the ending and how that relates. Questions? I'm good, you're fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And this brings us to the acceptance of meeting minutes from August 26, 2025. Do I have any revisions or objections? If I have none, then we will stop the minutes. Okay. No changes. That brings us to our audience, I believe, of citizens portion of this evening. Is there anyone here who would like to speak? Anyone? Anyone? Okay. That concludes our audience of citizens portion of this evening. New business, 6.1. We have discussion and possible action on the approval of the 2025-2026 Alliance Grant. Does that have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the 2025-2026 Alliance Grant.
Second? Great. Any questions or comments or, Adam, did you want to just kind of go over that little That we talked about the other day, which I'm trying to think what it was?
Oh, I think I'm in trouble.
The Q, Q rate?
Yes, so one difference within the budget from last year submitted through the Alliance Grant, funding is pretty stable as it has been the year prior, is that last year we had five Quinnipiac University apprentices, we've been able to staff eight, many in very hard-to-fill areas which are considered shortage areas by the state. So they have fully participated in our new faculty orientation, back-to-school professional learning, their mentors are also getting access to additional professional learning through Quinnipiac. So it continues to be a really positive partnership that I think has the opportunity to, again, support early career educators throughout that first internship year in a really high-quality way. We're grateful for our mentors in the district that give of their time. And so that is budgeted for within this and makes some increases, but we were able to offset it by streamlining some of our other like instructional supplies and resources.
Great. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Now, Adam, I know we talked about this, but we just go to accept or not approve, right? Is it to accept the?
It's on approval.
It is approved?
Yes. So part of the Alliance Grant every year comes before the Board of Education as part of the submission process.
Yeah, but there's not any specific wording? No, like, because some of the other ones, you know, we have to read.
Not built into the.
No specific statement then, right?
Correct.
All right. So on that note, we have a motion and it is a secondary specific, right?
Very specific one.
Yes.
Proclamation.
Any other comments? If not, no? Ropel?
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Delongo?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Ms. Torello?
Yes.
And Dr. DeLucia?
Yes.
All right.
Which brings us to, that's approved, right?
Yes.
Unanimous, yeah. 6.2, discussion and possible action on the approval of the 2025 and 2026 BOE goals as we revise this evening. Did you give them to me?
You were going to review them, yes.
I got them. Right here. Wait. Yes, and these are for Sarah?
Correct.
Would RJ remind me to give these to you to give, put on Sarah's desk?
No.
Very great. Okay. All right. Does that have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the 2025-2026 Board of Ed goals.
Second? Any questions or comments? No? All right. Ropel?
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Ms. Delongo?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Ms. Torello?
Yes.
Dr. DeLucia?
Yes.
Eight in favor, one opposed, the motion passes.
Okay. Brings us to 6.3, discussion and possible action on the approval of substitute secretary rates. And before I ask for a motion, I just want to make sure we're able to get those comp rates.
The comp rates are not available from Jennifer Piercy that I know of, but she did provide the rationale for how the current rate was established, and I think that was done in partnership. So if you have anything else that you want to add to it.
Yeah, so this rate is right in the middle of where below the lowest rate of a secretarial contract, but above the library aides. So it falls right in line, the union is in agreement with this rate. It is the first time we're having this rate just for a known extended absence, so we have coverage. Not sure how long we would actually use this for or when we would use it, but if the case arises, we need to be able to act and want to get it approved before you guys.
Do it have an amount?
Oh, it's in the memo.
$23 an hour.
Yes.
Well, I'm just saying for whoever makes the motion, too.
So RJ, a question.
Do I write in the motion?
Yes. Typically in the past, if a secretary was going to be out for, you know, a couple of weeks or something, the library aide would cover. Is that going to still happen or no?
I think with the new library coverage and we have this opportunity, if there is going to be an extended period of time, we can utilize this if there is a pool of secretaries.
So we're going to try to get a pool? Okay. That's good. That's good.
Okay. Yeah.
I will make a motion to approve the substitute secretary rate of $23 an hour.
Second? All right, we have a second. Ropel, vote.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Ms. Delongo?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Ms. Torello?
Yes.
Dr. DeLucia?
Yes.
That is nine in favor. Motion passes.
All right, that is going to conclude our meeting for this evening, 6.4. We're going to wait, we're going to, we have to review that list one more time, okay, before we bring it to everyone on September 23rd, which is our next regular meeting. Does anyone have any ideas, do they feel anything specific for a workshop next week?
As far as, well, asterisk.
So that was going to be my just announcement, so prior to the next meeting, Lisa and I'll be providing one-pagers that have that information in advance of the meeting. And then we, it's taken a long time for the state to release and unembargo the data, but we wanted to push that presentation up sooner than last year, so we'll have that for the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. You'll sleep good tonight.
And maybe Karen, if we come up, if anything pops up, we'll do a policy workshop at like 6:30, if we need to.
Sure.
I'm not sure if we're going to though.
Do you want to do the AI one or do you want to wait on that? Do you want to wait?
Yeah.
The data review is always a really robust meeting, so I don't know if you want to combo more.
Yeah, that's true.
The meeting after will have some policies, so maybe we can have a little bit of an update and some discussion around that embedded in the policy workshop?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I just want to make sure if we have the workshop, that we have everything that we need for it.
No, absolutely.
Yeah, because then we just sit here and we're like, all right, we don't have everything. All right, meeting adjourned.